At this time, I would like to call the Stanley County Board of Education meeting on May the 3rd, 2022 at 6:15 PM to order. Welcome to all that are here in attendance and to those that may be joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here and we thank you for your support of Stanley County Schools. I would like at this time to call on Board Vice Chair Ms. Carla Poplin for our invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come together and have this meeting. I would just pray that you give us guidance and knowledge.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. At this time, Board members, I would like to entertain a motion to enter into closed session for personnel matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A6; student matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A1; attorney-client matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A3. May I have a motion, please?
What are your motions, going to the full section?
Motion by Mr. Graves, a second.
Second.
By Ms. Poplin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. We are now in closed session.
Yes, sir. I really appreciate y'all coming. Thank you, y'all. Now, y'all have a couple things you have to do.
At this time, I would like to call our board back into open session. Once again, welcome to all that are in attendance. Thank you for being here. I believe we have a treat in store for us, so I'm going to turn this over to you, Dr. Dennis.
Yeah, we do have a treat tonight. We have Mr. Pulis and the North Stanley High School Band, and they are going to perform the Star Spangled Banner.
Mr. Pulis, thank you. That was amazing.
They are. They're really amazing.
They are. They are ama-- and you are too. We appreciate you. How many seniors in that group?
Me!
They're counting down the days.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. That was a real honor for us. So Board members, we'll have to continue to ask Dr. Dennis. We had West Stanley last meeting. This was North Stanley. Okay? So we're going after somebody.
We're coming to get you.
Okay? Next. That was great. Well, Board members and the public, I have a very special recognition of one of our Board members to present at this time. Our Vice Chair, Ms. Carla Poplin, has been appointed to the North Carolina School Board Association Legislative Committee. So please allow me to read the following letter. The title is "Local Board Member Appointed to North Carolina School Board Association Legislative Committee." "North Carolina School Board Association has named Stanley County Schools Board Member Carla Poplin and an at-large member of the North Carolina School Board Association Legislative Committee. These individuals will do the work that leads to the adoption of the association's legislative agenda," remarked North Carolina School Board Association President Lucy Edwards from North Hampton County. "They will help us design a survey to gather information from our members and then develop a draft agenda for adoption at the 2022 meeting of the North Carolina School Board Association's Delegate Assembly. In addition to the agenda, committee members will review ongoing legislative activity and provide guidance to the Board of Directors on legislative matters. This year's legislative committee is comprised of a subset of North Carolina School Board Association Board of Directors and 10 at-large school board members who were nominated by their school board and appointed by the North Carolina School Board Association President. The committee will meet later this year, and its members will serve a two-year term. The North Carolina School Board Association was established in 1937, and as an advocate for public school education, its mission is to provide leadership and services that enable local boards of education to govern effectively." So, we are so proud of you. I hope all of you will extend a congratulations to Ms. Poplin. That's awesome. Thank you. You know what I said to her, Mr. Sorenson?
You know what I said to Ms. Poplin?
I think yesterday. I said, "Now, Ms. Poplin, when you go to Raleigh, I think that Mr. Sorenson and I might tag along, and we'll go hang out in the Legislative Building and talk to people. We've got it all planned out. You're going to enjoy this." And out of 10 people, thank you and congratulations. Next on our agenda, we have a safety presentation by Ms. Jennifer Flo, our Stanley County School
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come before you tonight to share some of the things that we have in place. For most of you know, I took this position back in July of last year, so it's been an interesting position to conquer and try to get some things going, and we've done a lot, and we have a lot of things in place for the future. I brought one of my teammates with me, Sam Manduka. There she is. She's going to be my clicker tonight because I get carried away when I talk and I forget to click, so she's going to click for me. So I want to take a little bit and just share with you some of our partners that we have. You'll see on the screen here, we have some partners that we work with, collaborate with, and a lot of this is behind the scenes to keep the students and staff safe in Stanley County schools. So you may not always see everything that is going on. There's a lot of things that happen in the middle of the night. There's a lot of things that happen after hours. It's just all times of the day. I'm in communications with a lot of these folks. And I do have some of them here with me tonight that came out just to show our joint effort together to collaborate and be in work together. So I do want to recognize the ones that have come out. I'll just kind of start, and you can stand as I call your name. I have Sheriff Jeff Crisco is here representing the Sheriff Department. With Sheriff Crisco, we have Officer Parker and SRO Wagner, who are actually working the board meeting tonight. We usually have some officers that work the board meeting. SRO Wagner is actually our SRO at South Stanley Middle School. With us from Albemarle Police Department, we have Chief Jason Bolharst, if I said that right, sorry. And we have our SRO, Brotherford, who is actually our SRO at East and Central. And our SROs help cover other schools as needed, so he's actually helping us this week at Albemarle High School, too, so he's getting elementary and high school going this week. With us from Locust Police Department, Chief Shue, at the last moment, could not be here, so we have our brand-new Day Two SRO at Locust with us. Daniel Longton is here, so we want to welcome him to Stanley County and to Locust and thank him for being here, but he's a great asset. Deveron said he was out playing football with the kids yesterday, so they're having a lot of good building relationships. From Stanley County Emergency Management, representing Emergency Management, Fire Marshal's Office, and EMS, I have Dale Chandler here and Robert Will Hoyt here. So these are just a few of the agencies that I collaborate with about on a daily basis that my text and phone goes to them almost daily, working, but they are great at anything I need, last minute, they will make it happen. Just a couple of things with the Fire Marshal's Office. They do two inspections a year in our schools to keep our schools safe, so they are in our schools regularly. EMS, they provide a lot of our ambulances and EMS at our ballgames, athletic events, if anything else is needed. And then our law enforcement, they are there for whatever we need. So let's give these guys and these agencies a round of applause for supporting us. And as you can see, there's a lot more on here. Safe Kids Stanley County, I'll talk more about them in just a moment, and some things that we collaborate with them on, but there is a lot of agencies that we work with on a daily basis, so we appreciate all of their support. Our next slide just kind of shows a little bit of what we do. In the first picture, you will see our Student Services Team. And like Melissa Smith said last month when she presented, it is a team effort. We all work together, just like Sam is here with me tonight clicking. Beverly's in the back. Melissa's actually finishing up one of her classes tonight across the hall, but we all work together on just about everything that we do. The middle picture is actually South Side Fire Department. Beginning of the school year, they worked with some bus evacuations with our bus drivers, teaching our drivers how to evacuate the buses safely and quickly if they need to in case of an emergency. The next picture you will see is actually our Safe Kids of Stanley County collaborating with the Sheriff's Department and the North Carolina Highway Patrol. We've actually been at West Stanley last week. We're going to be at North this week with South High visiting, but we are working to help them understand about underage drinking and the repercussions of that. At the bottom, you'll see a couple of our officers from Albemarle Police Department working with the food drive that we had. We've done several food drives where the officers come in and work with us. And in the middle, you will see, this is one of our active shooter drills that we had at the very beginning, where some of our administrators come in and actually watch some of this in action, so we will know how to prepare and how to react should we have an emergency in one of our schools. Our next slide shows just additional pieces that we have. Emergency Management, we coordinate with them a lot, especially during severe weather, whether it's, you know, a tornado warning or thunderstorm warning or just weather moving through. I'll work with them to understand exactly maybe where the sales are in Stanley County so that we can make sure our kids are safe, whether they need to shelter in place or whatever they need to do. These other pictures, just working with transportation. I've driven a couple of bus routes this year when we've had some shortages of bus drivers who getting these kids home safely. And then the next picture is just kind of a funny picture that Melissa and I like to laugh about. We go out into some of the schools and help with administration sometimes, and so you can see that we just, we don't stop until we drop. So we retired that day. So, moving on with school safety, this just shows a little bit about my role as Safety Director, and this is just a few of the highlights. Not going to spend a lot of time reading through each of these. I'll share this presentation with you. But basically, just to coordinate a comprehensive safety program, which includes being that liaison with law enforcement and other emergency management agencies. Working with crisis management, emergency response plans in the schools, being able to work with those site-based administrators, training for staff, training for administrators, and then just working on security plans for special events. We've got proms coming up, so I've been coordinating with the SROs and with law enforcement for those events as well. So a couple of things that we've put into place. Anonymous reporting. This is something that we have in grade six through 12. We have Say Something Anonymous Reporting. It is an app that they can go to and report anything from bullying to any kind of threat that they've seen, any kind of safety concern that they have. They can report that if they happen to know of someone maybe who is self-harming, but it's anonymous. They can go in and report. We started this back in November. Our students were trained. We've had 31 tips that have been entered and received by their call center, and then their call center filters it, asks questions, gathers information, and then pushes it out to our school-based teams and our district-based teams. And then we investigate as we need to. Sometimes, depending on the nature of the incident, they may go ahead and call and dispatch our 911 center and dispatch our law enforcement out to go do a well check, and then we follow up the following day at school as well. So it's been a joint effort with that. Our K5, we have a Say Something Anonymous Google Form. And for right now, we're hoping that we can implement the Say Something across the district. We're waiting on some more funding to come down from the state for that, but it would be great to be able to have just one platform across the district. So we're going to click on, I did want to show you something that we've got around our schools. So this is actually on our website. If you click this link, it takes you to our website, but this is our QR code. So our middle schools and our high schools have placed this QR code around the schools, and we've actually, transportation has put it on the buses as well. That way, if the kids want to or need to report something, they can scan this quickly, you know, in locations that are maybe away from everyone else, and then report something that they need to report for safety concerns. Safe Promise Clubs is a piece of this, and the Safe Promise Clubs are student-led organizations that encourage young students to take charge of keeping their friends, their schools, and their communities safe. And 77% of our middle and high schools have established a Safe Promise Club. Some of them have been active, posting it on their school Facebook sites, different things like that, but it's just a club to bring these kids together, to help get them talking about when they see something, to say something, to keep everyone safe. Couple of other things we have in place is Gaggle Alerts. These are alerts that come over the computer when students use their computer. It monitors emails and Google Drive, and it sends flags. It flags certain words. It can actually block things, depending on the nature of the information coming through. It sends alerts to our school-based team and our district-based team as well. We communicate to check on these students, make sure they're okay, investigate it, and then do whatever is needed before we move on and close that alert out. Something else we've implemented is walk-through metal detectors. We purchased these for middle schools, high schools, and then we purchased an additional one for the academy. We've been using these at athletic events, along with wanding and bag checks, just to ensure that everyone is safe when they come to these events. It's got large groups of people. We do have school safety plans. The school safety plans are updated once a year. We work with our law enforcement. Our SROs are a huge piece of this. Our critical incident boxes that we have on campus as a backup to take with us if we have to evacuate for some reason. Our panic buttons are tested through the 911 center. We actually push those buttons. We watch them go through 911. We time how long it takes for a response. We did add something to our fire drill form in talking with the Fire Marshal's Office. We wanted to know an accountability time, accountability of our staff and students evacuating from the buildings. It's great to get everyone out, but we need to be accountable. We need to know how quickly they can get out, but if we've got everybody out. So having a way to make sure that everybody is accounted for. We also have a drill schedule that is set and shared with the admin teams, anything from our tornado drills to earthquake drills, fire drills, any kind of drill that we have, lockdown, secure perimeter. Our SROs work with our admin teams to conduct these drills, evaluate these drills. Our Fire Marshal's Office, some of our law enforcement agencies will also come in and assist with these, just as a set of eyes from the outside so that they can see maybe things that we don't see on a daily basis and make suggestions as well. In our safety labs, or our science labs, I should say, we have tried to update our safety equipment in there as well. So working with Dr. Mitchell and Dr. Blake Lewis with curriculum, we have updated a lot of our labs to include cabinets for storage, for chemicals, for things like that, to make sure that our labs are safe. Our middle school and high school teachers were trained in lab safety using Safe Schools videos as well. Safe Kids Stanley County is a group I was a part of years ago when I was with the fire service and glad to be back a part of them now. They do a lot of things throughout the county, but they have really partnered with us to make a couple of things become a reality. Our ninth-grade health classes teach like alcohol safety, impaired driving, underage drinking. So they have actually purchased some fatal vision goggles for each of our high school classes that we are going to be able to put at each school so that when they're teaching these curriculums, they can use these goggles to put on to actually see what it is like to be impaired. We've actually used these at a couple of our events, which I'll get into now with the Batmobile. This is the breath alcohol testing. It's the Batmobile with the Highway Patrol. We've been doing this with our juniors and our seniors, bringing the Batmobile out to the schools, letting them go through, hearing the repercussions of underage drinking, the financial repercussions, as well as health and safety. And we've been using the goggles there as well to let these kids see what it is like. We've purposely scheduled these events about two days before each of their proms. So West Stanley's was last Thursday. They had their prom on Saturday. This week, we'll be at North, and South Stanley students are coming there as well, and then their prom is this weekend, and then we'll finish up with Albemarle. So there's some links there to Safe Kids, so I would encourage you to check that link out. That is their Facebook page, but they have a lot of events throughout, from water safety to bicycle safety to all kinds of safety, but they are great at supporting us and working with us to bring safety into our schools. And then wrapping up, just some things more to come. We are working on some additional grants to provide additional video surveillance in our schools, cameras, maybe in our areas that our hall areas or areas of where large groups gather, visibility outside around the perimeters of our buildings for security. Working on access control for our doors, for the key cards, so we can manage that a little bit better. SRO grants are becoming available again soon, additional safety grants, vulnerability assessment needs. Each year, our SROs work with our admin teams to do a vulnerability assessment of their campus, and then based on that is where a lot of our, where we see our needs, and then we can use our grant money to make those schools safer. We are working on a SES safety website. I'm in the process of getting that done, so once I get that done, that will be live on Stanley County Schools' website, so community, staff, students, parents can go on there, and there'll be links to safety information, anything from weather safety to fire safety, anything safety-related. And I did just want to mention that the Sheriff's Department and Albemarle Police Department are both going to be doing summer camps, so that will be a great opportunity for students to be involved in those. They have put flyers out. I know the Sheriff Department's already released their flyers. I think APDs is coming soon, and Melissa Smith is pushing it out in Peach Jar. So we are getting this information out, but this is some great opportunities for students to join these camps, to learn more about safety and police, and just have some fun this summer.
Are there any questions?
That was, that was awesome. I mean, I am, I'm amazed at all the things that, number one, we do have in place, and you know, safety is, it's always at the top of, you know, the list for our, for our students. And I just appreciate everything and everyone that works with you, that interconnection that you have with our sheriff and the Chief of Police and Fire and SROs and EMT, everybody here and everyone that's here, those representing, thank you for your service. Thank you for helping us to keep our students safe in Stanley County schools. Mr. Graves, I know that you were on this newly-formed committee, so I know that you are pleased with this.
I was going to save my praise for the committee report, so you get double-dos.
All right. Very good.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Flo. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a time for public comments in accordance with Policy 2310. Public participation at Board members each month or meetings each month, part of at least one scheduled board meeting, will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present their comments. The public session will not exceed 15 minutes total. Again, I just ask that you please be cognizant of the three-minute time limit. Tonight, we have one person that signed up to address the board. If you would like to come forward, this is Ms. Ginger Whitley. Can you meet, can you reach that mic?
I can. I just got to move some things over. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Ginger Whitley, and I'm with Moms for Liberty of Stanley County. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, but it has been brought to my attention that there are multiple books that is in our high schools with sexual content and inappropriate language obscenity. One of these novels is Cold Mountain, which was used as an English assignment. When a parent spoke up and spoke to a board member, Mr. List said, "Some board members do not like this book. Our job is to uphold the policy 3210." According to North Carolina General Statute 14-190.1, obscene literature exhibits, it shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to intentionally dismantle obscenity for the purpose of the article of any material. And it goes on to say, if you read that General Statute in A, B, and C, there's a violation and it's a felony. These books here are in Albemarle and Stanley High School, North Stanley High School. Creating Policies and Establishing Standards and Accountability, I thought that's what the Board did, the Board of Education did. I would like to read you a passage here. "I just never given one," she answered, her little voice deep and succ- and it was seductive, and it was, and so I thought I would be, I would explode. I thought, I never thought, I mean, for Alaska hearing that stuff was one thing, but no, here, this little sweet Romanian voice goes all sexy all of a sudden. Do I, I mean, do I have to? I think I want to, with a kiss a little. It was like watching The Brady Bunch. Laura unbuttoned my pants and pulled my boxers down and pulled out my penis. Wow, she said. What?
Okay, Ms. Whitley, I'm going to stop you with this, so if you can bring the book into us, and we have a committee, we have, we will look at that book. We already are looking at books.
This book is Looking for Alaska, and it's on the shelves in Stanley County.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I'm going to ask you to refrain from reading the book simply due to the people that are in here in the audience, and I would like for you to, you can leave the book or we can, we've made a, I've written down the book right here. What school is that in?
That would be North.
Okay, North Stanley, so I've made a, I've made a note of that.
And you need to make a note of the General Statute, and that General Statute is 14-190.1, and it talks about sexual content in books and being a felony. This book, it has oral sexual contact in it.
This book, it has oral sexual content in it, content in it, and this one has racial slurs as well as sexual content. If it's not okay for me to read it out loud in this room, why is it okay that our children are reading this as an assignment? I don't want my child reading this, doing assignments.
Thank you.
You can get the, on your own copy from one of those libraries.
Next on the agenda is the approval of our consent agenda, which consists of the approval of the minutes from the April 5th, 2022 regular board meeting, and the continuance of our optional mask mandate. I believe all of you have had a chance to read over those minutes, so moving right along. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda?
A motion by Ms. Poplin, could I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion? All approve, say aye. Oppose, no. Then the consent agenda has been approved. Next up are committee reports, facilities, Dr. Lefler, I'm going to call on you first.
We haven't had a meeting since the last board meeting, but we have gotten information about our grant funding for our schools, and we didn't receive any of the funding. I think some of the schools in Anson and maybe Montgomery County did, but it was low-income funding, so we didn't get any. We will be having a meeting in the next month, and we're going to make our long-term plan for our facilities, and we will be applying next year for a grant also, and hopefully we'll get some of the funding next year. But we'll be working on our facilities in the next month. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Lefler. I appreciate your hard work and those that's on your committee with this, and Todd Bowers, our superintendent. I know that you put a lot of time into it, and we look forward to when your committee meets again, and you bring even more things to us. Next up is finance, Mr. Dustin List.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a short meeting last month, I'm sorry, last week, to discuss the supplemental funds for teacher compensation. It was approved as part of the budget and approved by the State Board in January, and we've received the money. And essentially, what that allows is for the local board to just disperse money. We will provide, per that budget, and the funds provided from the state, $1,100 per, for teachers and certified instructional personnel. So, we did make a motion and approved out of the committee, and I will bring this to the board as a motion, Madam Chair, to use the PRC funds for supplements to pay all eligible certified staff on payroll as of May the 1st, in the amount of $1,100 on or before May 31st.
Okay, so I'm going to read that back. You are bringing out of your committee before the board, the motion to use the PRC funds for supplements to pay all eligible certified staff on payroll, okay, instructional certified staff on payroll as of May the 1st, 2022, to receive an $1,100 supplement, and it is to be paid by the end of May.
Owner before.
Owner, the end of May 31st. Okay, you've heard the motion that's been brought out of committee from finance. Could I have a second? Second by Mr. Graves, is there any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, this has, this has passed and been approved. Thank you, Mr. List, for working hard on that in your committee. Instructional program, Mr. Bill Sorenson.
Dr. Amy Blake Lewis will fill us all in on a little bit on some AIG stuff.
Okay, and I know we're all looking forward to that. Thank you for what you do in your committee. Marketing, community engagement, safety, Mr. Anthony Graves.
Thank you. So, once again, I want to thank Ms. Jennifer Flo for presenting tonight. This was the second part of a two-part series, as Chairman Gibson mentioned. When we had our first meeting, there was a lot of, there were a lot of new things. Melissa Smith's charter was new this year, and so I wanted to make sure everybody in the community understood what her role was, her new role in community engagement and dropout prevention, and she gave us an excellent presentation. And at the same meeting, I asked Jennifer Flo if she would provide a presentation on school safety and security. As she mentioned, and there are too many people to thank, I do want to thank the individuals from emergency services and law enforcement that are here tonight, and Sheriff Crisco, there you go. The, and I point him out because SROs are like family, they're embedded employees in the school system, and so they're there with the kids every single day, and so we certainly appreciate them very, very much. But it's interesting, we've had a lot of weather and interesting events in the county over the, since the beginning of the year, and I've been impressed with how Ms. Flo has engaged with the superintendent and the central office to get information out as quickly as possible, and certainly we've learned from a couple of events, and there's always room for improvement, but Emergency Services has done a great job, as they've transitioned some staff too, to work with her and the school system, to make sure that we are on top of all these safety and security-related matters, so I want to thank her. And then, one quick update for folks, there was a, there were some meetings up at North Stanley High School a while back about an incident that, that had occurred, and there was some concern in the community, and there was some, people wanted to be able to express some feelings about that situation, and so the superintendent, the central office, and his staff quickly planned some workshops, and also a community meeting that was held at North Stanley High School. And one of the outcomes of that meeting was that the students of the school primarily had requested some type of way for them to communicate some of their concerns and desires to, to the school and to the school system, and a number of other ideas came out of that, including doing community groups across the county, from north, south, Albemarle, and west. There was a follow-up meeting yesterday that was sort of like a forming committee meeting, if you will, where Dr. Amy Blake Lewis and the superintendent presented information to the community. I'll make two comments on that. One, I wish more people had showed up, but I was glad that we got all the people to show up that we did. And one thing that is certain is that we do have a lot of people in the community that are concerned, we want to solve problems, and I think that this is a good first step, and certainly we'll make sure that anything positive that comes out of these efforts will try to roll out across the community in the coming months and into next year. So, I just wanted to highlight that. It is a priority for the school system, and, and I did want to emphasize too, one of the things we've talked about in the committee was creating these community groups, so that people have a way to, they can't always come to the school board meeting, and you can't come and ask meetings, how do I, what do I do if I find myself in this situation, or my child finds theirself in this situation? A lot of times, there's, there's text messages and there's emails to individual board members. We want to create another way for people to get this information by being able to reach out to people in their community, and we're still trying to put together what that would look like, but I just wanted to share with folks that that is another priority for the school system, about giving more information, more access to people, and more transparency, and more accountability. That's a good thing. So, thank you, Chairman Gibson, for letting me share that.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. I appreciate what all, what all you're doing, and again, Ms. Flo with the safety was very informational tonight. I've asked Ms. Poplin to kind of go over something that I think goes along with this community engagement, and I know she's on your committee, so if you don't mind telling a little bit about what you've been doing in the school.
I work locally for a nonprofit, and our nonprofit has just committed to being lunch buddies for some of our students in our county, and post-COVID, that has opened back up now, and if there is anybody in the community that's willing to take 15, 20, 30 minutes out of your day to have lunch with a child, it's very easy to do. You can call up Terry Scott here at the county office, and you can get a volunteer form, and they'll run a background check, and then you either are approved or not approved, and you can go and eat lunch with a child. These students, these SROs, now you see them, they'll eat lunch with kids, there and there. There's community members that come in, parents, people from different groups, they just want to get a little extra support, a little mentoring in there. It's just, it's just added friend throughout the day, and you just make the commitment to go, I go twice a week to two different schools, but you just make the commitment to eat with that child at least once a week. And, you know, we say that 20 minutes a day reading helps the child, but that 15 or 20 minutes a day sometimes can change the whole attitude and behavior of a child. I mean, I've seen it, you know, my kids today were like, "Ms. Poplin, are you coming back next Tuesday?" I'm like, "Yes, I'll be back next Tuesday." We, we'll be good so that we can come to lunch buddies, or you know, they, they just really enjoy that time, and it, it just shows those kids that there's somebody out there that cares about them, there's somebody out there that takes the time once a week to show up, be there, and I have to do is sit there and conversate with your kids. Sometimes I don't even eat lunch, because sometimes the lunch is early, sometimes it's really late. It's just, it's just being there and showing up, so I guess we're kind of reaching out to the community and asking, because I have almost 10 lunch buddies that I eat with, I eat with four or five at each school, and, but you can only eat with so many, and there's so many of them, it's like, can my friend come, or my friend wants a lunch buddy, and I'm like, I can only eat with so many kids a week. So, if you guys have time or want to give back to the schools, that's a great way to give back to our students, just kind of be there for them and mentor them a little bit.
Thank you. I wanted you to share that, and especially when you said you have so many, it, it just shows that there's a need there in our, in our schools, and, you know, just that short amount of time that you can be there just to be a lunch buddy and have a little conversation, I guess, and mentor, and I know you enjoy that, I know you do, and I appreciate what you do. Next up is personnel, Ms. Vicky Watson.
The report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm back to Ms. Poplin, as we know, she always has things with policy.
Yeah, and we only got halfway through this month, so I have, the first set will be for final approval, and then I'll have a set to be rescinded, so. The first set will start with Policy 7100, Recruitment and Selection of Personnel. New Policy 7110, Information Provided by Applicant or Employee. Policy 7120, Employee Health Certification. 7130, Licensor. New Policy 7210, Staff Involvement in Decision-Making. Policy 5026-7250, Smoking and Tobacco Products. 7260, Occupational Exposure to Bloodborne Pathogens. 7262, Communicable Diseases with Employees. 7265, Occupational Exposure to Hazardous Chemicals and Science Laboratories. Policy 5024-6127/7266, Emergency Epinephrine Auto-Injector Devices. New Policy 5028/6130/7267, Automated External Defibrillator. Policy 5027/7275, Weapons and Explosives Prohibition. Policy 5030, Community Use of Facilities are all up for final approval tonight.
So, I am, Ms. Poplin's bringing that to us as a motion to, out of committee, to approve these policies for tonight. Can I have a second? Second by Mr. Sorenson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, these policies have been approved.
And I'll just read off my list to be rescinded. 5,000 Equal Employment Opportunities, 5015 Assignment of Personnel, 5115 Advertising Vacancies, 5205 Criminal Record Checks, 5300 Recruitment and Selection of Personnel, 5305 Retention and Promotion, 5500 Classified Personnel, 5510 Retention and Promotion, 5225 Health Certificate Required, 5315 Licensor, 5375 Temporary Assignments, 5085 Use of Tobacco Products, 5080 Bloodborne Pathogens Policy Guidelines and Exposure Control Plan, 5220 Safety, 5075 Communicable Diseases and Conditions with Employees, 5090 Reporting Information to External Agencies, 5220 Safety, 4120-A Emergency Epinephrine Auto-Injector Devices, 2005 Weapons and Explosives, 2010 Community Use of Facilities, and those are just to be rescinded.
No action on those. Thank you. We have to approve what's been to be rescinded. Okay, so Ms. Poplin's bringing that out then, off committee, for the policies to be rescinded. I just need a second. A second by Ms. Watson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Okay, that has been approved, for those policies to be rescinded. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I would like to call on Dr. Amy Blake Lewis for a district update with curriculum and instruction, and I know we're looking forward to this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask Lynn Plummer to join me at this time for the presentation of our And I'm going to turn things over to him.
Thank you. Good evening. Once every three years, we have the pleasure of reviewing, revising, rewriting our local plan for academically intellectually gifted programs. This just so happens to be our year to do that. We are finishing our plan that was 2019 to 2022, so this will be our 2022 to 2025. This is also the first AIG plan I have been lucky enough to write, so it was quite a process to go through that this year. I have to say, one of the best things that we brought back this year was bringing back an AIG Advisory Board, rather than it just falling on us to write this plan. We really tried to reach out to stakeholders who have investment in AIG programs in our schools. So, in front of you are the names of the individuals who have served on our AIG Advisory Board this year. They are all serving three-year terms on a rotating basis, so I've locked them in for a couple more years to keep us going, but we do have representation from leadership, AIG teachers, counselors, classroom teachers, parents, and the community. So, these folks have been very instrumental in getting their voice out there, questioning people, seeing what they feel like would work best, bringing those ideas back so that we can generate something that's not just about us at Central Office, not just about us within our schools, but making sure anybody who has their hands on these students has the opportunity to put their voice into this plan. So, many thanks to these folks who have served on the Advisory Board, and will continue to do so into next year. We have also been grateful to have at our right hand this year, Dr. Matt Makel. He reached out to us, he wrote a grant through the U.S. Department of Education to help support districts as they write these AIG plans for 2022, 2025. He works for Johns Hopkins University, has done a lot of research, worked with AIG programs all over the nation, so to have him at my right hand anytime I've needed him has been very beneficial. He's also been to all of our Advisory Board meetings and put out some ideas, things that may be different, things that we've never thought of before, just to make sure that we're geared the right way as we plan for this. Last but not least, certainly we have to be thankful for those people who we go to as our AIG contacts in our schools. Elementary schools have AIG teachers. Elementary schools have AIG teachers, middle schools have AIG teachers, AIG specialists, and at high schools, our counselors are certainly there to help our students make sure they're scheduled for the right classes, on the right trajectory to get to where they need to be as they move along with AIG identification. As a whole, our AIG students fall into these categories when we look at demographics. Um, our head count was just completed Friday, so Mr. Bush gave me these numbers um Monday morning, so they are as up to date as we can be. We still have several students who are going through the identification process and will be identified between now and the end of the school year or even over the summer, um but right now, this is where we stand with our percentages as far as our students go. With those students, this is our budget that we have. The state does allot us um four hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. Locally, we are funded fifteen thousand dollars. So if we go back and think about those six AIG teachers that we really have in our schools, that's what a large majority of our budget ends up going to, making sure that we've got people who can work with those students. Mr. Dudney does help me a lot. When we have extra here and there, we can get the resources that we need and get them into the conferences that they want to attend and those types of things, but he keeps us in line on the money side of things. So what we are looking at tonight, what you have in front of you, is the plan for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five. I will tell you, there's probably not a lot within the plan that looks much different than what we would typically do, simply because the the plan is just meant to be a big umbrella. It doesn't get down into the weeds, it doesn't get into the nitty-gritty of things and what's really happening in the schools. We're responsible for going back and making sure these things are happening and making sure that we are improving and growing our programs along the way. The plan itself just kind of gives you that outline of what that's going to look like. What I um have done to kind of help support this presentation tonight, um because the plan itself is sixty-one pages, I know right now you don't have the time to read sixty-one pages, you can do that later, but um within those sixty-one pages, we have gone back this year as an AIG advisory board and as AIG staff to figure out what our priorities are. Where do we need to go next? We know there's work to be done, we know that we want our students to have the best opportunities that we can give them, K-12, but we can't bite it all off at one time. Where are we going to start? What are we going to do to get us to where we want to be? So our top three priorities within the AIG standards are really going to be our focus for this first year, to get those things rolling and spinning and then moving on to our, once we get those accomplished, we can move on to the next things. There are six standards within the AIG plan that are in front of you there. Again, just a basic generic outline, umbrella overview of what takes place within the AIG program. Priority one that we have determined that we really want to look at is making sure that we're offering equitable services to our students. We want to know that if we've got a student that goes to school A, they are receiving the same services as a student at school B, they're offered the same opportunities as the student at school C. We want to make sure that we've got the right people in place, the right staff in the right places to make that happen, so that we know all students are provided those same opportunities. Um, lots of strategies that Dr. Makel has talked us through and talked with us about. Dr. Mitchell and I met with middle school principals today to make sure that we can tighten up some of the programs that are going on there, to make sure they've got what they need at their disposal, but being equitable across the district is one thing we certainly want to look at and make important to our schools. Number two, strengthening partnership opportunities. We are starting in two weeks, our first cohort with Pfeiffer University. We have teachers who are going to become AIG certified, which will give them the ability to step outside of the classroom if they choose and be an AIG specialist in some of our schools. If they choose not to leave the classroom, they've got that knowledge for when they're in the classroom and being able to differentiate content for AIG students. So we are very excited to have worked with Dr. Kern at Pfeiffer University to bring this to our teachers um through some of our federal monies with Title II, which is professional development. We are able to offer this opportunity to teachers, they will be able to travel through this cohort together at Pfeiffer um as a single unit, and this time next year, they will be graduating and have their AIG certification. So we are certainly excited about that, but being a priority, we want to see what can we do to grow that? How can we continue that? What other steps can we take to get more teachers um certified for AIG? And our third priority is inclusive identification. COVID has really put a spin on us for our identification. Um, a lot of our identification gateways relied on EOG, and not having EOGs at the end of that very first COVID year really threw us for a tailspin in how to get those students identified. And not being able to leave them behind, we want to make sure that we're getting all the students that we need to get, um especially underrepresented populations, making sure that just because you can't pass an EOG doesn't mean you're not gifted in some way, but understanding what those ways of giftedness look like, not just for AIG teachers, but what are classroom teachers noticing? We've changed some um components within our identification plan, um rather than relying on a portfolio that a student has to show work sample after work sample after work sample, we've added in the HOPE scale, which is teachers being able to show ways that students have shown proficiency and shown giftedness within their classroom, just really opening opportunities so that we don't um cage everything in into a small box, but instead, we're opening those opportunities to make sure any students who exhibit those qualities, we are able to bring them along on the identification side. So basically, you've got sixty-one pages in front of you, but what I tried to do was go back and create the brochure that you have in front of you, too. I think that narrows everything down a little better and gives you an overall synopsis of what's included in each of those standards, reminds you of what those priorities are and how they relate back to each of those big overarching standards. Also, this is a document that we want to use to communicate to the community, to parents, to students, to teachers, what is within the AIG plan. Through our survey process with the rewrite of the plan this year, a lot of parents, a lot of teachers even, said, we don't know what's written in this AIG plan, and go back to two thousand nineteen, I'm not sure that I knew what was in it. Um, now I know, and now it's my responsibility to make sure others know. So um this is a document that we can make sure that people can get their hands on, make sure AIG parents have it, make sure um teachers who are in contact with AIG students have it, and of course, it can be shared with the community just to know what's happening in the field of our AIG programs.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Plummer. I think we all up here are just amazed and thankful for what you have done and and Dr. Amy Blake Lewis.
Dr. Lefler has a question.
Oh, Dr. Lefler, I'm sorry.
Mr. Plummer.
Yes, sir.
How many students are we talking about out of our eight thousand?
Well, I would like to tell you right off the top of my head, we still have a couple that um student information is working on with some of the identification that has happened last minute. Um, we're looking at roughly eight fifty. So de- depending on, now, again, right now, we're probably a little lower than what we would typically be on a typical year, simply because of our identification, the past year was thrown off not having AIG scores. AIG teachers have worked tremendously this year to revisit what identification looks like so that we don't cancel those kids out and not give them that chance. Um, so typically, it's a between twelve, twelve and a half percent of our students that are typically identified academically or intellectually gifted.
So you were talking about equal access to courses. How are we going to do that? Because it seems like some schools have a lot of AIG courses and some have just about zero, so how are we kind of going to even that out?
Well.
So we've got everybody with the opportunity.
Well, and and I think the first part of it for us is going back to building those partnerships and making sure that we have staff who is equipped to instruct those courses. Without having the people to be able to do it, it takes it off the playing field altogether. So we certainly want to start there. Um, Dr. Mitchell and I, like I said, met with middle school principals today to be able to talk about what they envision that program to look like, how that fits into their master schedules they've already started working on, how that fits into that avid program that's in middle schools, how that fits into some of those connection blocks they've talked about doing next year, so that it does open those opportunities and it's not so confined. Those students have the opportunity to meet with one another, but then also meet with teachers who have that availability to um push the rigor of what they're teaching along the way.
I have a follow-up to that. So several years ago, um, there were, there was a lot of controversy around this concept of being able to address the fact that it was going to be nearly impossible for us to offer all of the AP classes, um, we'll just single those out for for right now, across all of the high schools. I know it's an issue today, one of my friends has a child that attends one of the high schools, and they're not going to be offering one of the 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 classes. Um, he may pull his kid out of the county over this. I mean, it's this serious. Um, and so, I mean, unless the board's going to issue a transfer, and how many times, how many kids do we have to move all around the place so they can get the classes they need? So someone um proposed, why don't we take um these uh virtual learning classrooms that we had the equipment in, it had previously been ripped out, but but under Dr. James, it's my understanding that we put that equipment back in right before COVID hit. First, do we have those virtual classrooms in all the high schools? Right now, do you know? And if you don't know, that's okay.
Um, I can speak to what we have put in place during my tenure. Uh, during COVID, we did invest in Polycom systems. Um, I I know right off the top of my head, we purchased at least fifty of them, and those have been distributed across the county primarily in the high school settings, so that is very much an option, but I will be completely honest with you, when we approached teachers with that scenario, we uh had a good bit of pushback on it.
I'm not surprised. Um, unfortunately, we have to come up with solutions, not problems, together, and this is, it frustrated me eight years ago, it's frustrated me four years ago, I'm I'm even more upset about it today, because um if there was one thing that COVID did, it did show that um some students struggle in a remote environment. Um, and one of the big complaints in us being able to try to address this problem of inequity over some of these advanced classes, um, was the fact that we had to have a teacher in the classroom. If we didn't have a teacher in the classroom, forget it, it wouldn't work. Well, that's obviously been disproven, because there are programs where students have excelled, um, being able to work remotely, and of course, the issue was, well, when you get to college, a lot of your college courses are going to be remote anyway. So um, uh, I'm glad that you brought this up, and I I'm glad that Dr. Lefler brought it up as well, because I do want to look at this, it's a problem that we haven't solved yet, and if we're going to truly address the issue of equity with the budget constraints that we have, we need to be smart about how we're leveraging our technology to make sure that we can do the best job we can bringing these classes to all the students that that are eligible to attend.
I agree totally. One issue we're having with AP classes, too, is recruiting kids, because.
No, go ahead.
Okay, because um a lot of kids want to take the CCP classes, and the reason being is they can get the credit much easier. All you have to do is get a C, and they'll transfer to a university system, and these uh AP classes, they're all more rigorous, and the tests are very rigorous, and we even have colleges and universities who aren't taking threes anymore. For instance, I think NC State and some of their classes take a four, and it's an extremely rigorous test, so we do have the kids, and this is just anecdotal from what I've talked to them, they would re, yeah, they would rather go and, you know, I know I can get a C and I'll get the credit, plus I get to go off campus, and it's a little more attractive to them, so it would also be a situation where we'd have to better uh help them understand and advertise those classes.
Just to bring something to light that myself and Ms. Gibson were able to see at the regional board meeting the other day, surprisingly, um, the AIG students did worse than the general population on their EOGs from online learning. Um, that data is coming back to um Amy Blake Lewis countywide, but this was a statewide, and they went into depth, and for whatever reason, they um underperformed the general population, they don't really know why, but um that was the data that we saw.
Yes, ma'am, and Ms. Poplin, we have requested our county data, it has just not been sent down to us yet, but we have requested it, and I will certainly share that uh with the instructional committee and then, of course, to the board, if if that is the pleasure of the board, to share that with the whole board.
Right.
Just something to think of.
No, that's great, it's great, it just means we need to hire more teachers, and we're going to have to pay teachers more to attract, to get them into Stanley County schools. Either way, we have to fix this problem.
Hey, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis and and Mr. Plummer, um, you might have said this already, how how many teachers do we have now in this starting cohort?
We have nine.
Nine.
Nine? Are they all from Stanley County?
All not, yes, now Randolph has some that is joining us.
But nine are ours.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. That's that's awesome.
One more finance question on this, you mentioned fifteen thousand of the program was.
Local.
Local fund funded. Now, i- i- is it that the county commissioner specifically earmarked that, or did we just allocate that from the local funds?
That was allocated in order to pay the local students.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear to the public.
Yes, and Madam Chair, this does require board approval, so if you would entertain a vote.
Okay, um, the vote to approve the.
To approve the plan.
The AIG plan that has been presented tonight by both of you. Okay, so you have heard, I will state that again, or I will entertain a motion to approve this twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, academically gi- and intellectually gifted plan that has been put together now.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five academically gifted local plan.
Can I have a motion by Ms. Poplin? Is there a second? Second by Ms. Watson, any more discussion?
I have a quick question. Um, is the board prohibited from making changes to the plan over time or requesting changes be made, or is this locked in stone?
No, we we can absolutely amend it.
Okay, thanks.
Um, those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, this plan has been approved. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So what we brought to you today, we just ad hoc called it stated to district, but we've had several things that have come out this past week that affect a district as a whole. Uh, one of them, uh, of course, is a big one, our accreditation, and then we had some uh compliance things that were cleared up, and I want to go over some preliminary financial uh items as well. So I'll start off with Dr. Blake Lewis and the accreditation from Cognia.
So we recently completed our district accreditation with Cognia, which is a internationally recognized accreditation agency for um all sorts of institutes of learning, from pre-K to K-12 to higher ed, uh, college and universities, and uh this is, this is done on a five-year cycle, so our last visit was completed in two thousand seventeen, uh, so it's been a while, and a lot of things have changed. Cognia rates a school system on thirty-one indicators, and each indicator can be assigned a rating uh in three different areas. Initiate, which is the lowest level, which includes their descriptors of engagement and implementation, so basically, this means this is a starting point. This is where you are seeking to engage your stakeholders in a process, in a procedure, to get buy-in, uh, to begin to establish um an ince- and in, uh, and in, uh, excuse me, I'm losing my word there, to establish um an initiative, um, and get it up off the ground. So that's that initial implementation. The second rating that you can be assigned is improve, which is pretty much equated to the average level, where you have some things in place, you're starting to yield some results that you're wanting to see, and you're growing towards sustaining those programs, those processes, those procedures, and those um initiatives. And then the highest level of rating from Cognia is referred to as impact, and this is where everyone strives to be, because this tells us that we have embedded these practices in our daily work. It's second nature to us. Uh, people know that this is how we operate, we are seeing the results from this, we are getting um performance and progress from our students, uh, and we're seeing what we want to see within our district. So when we look at Stanley County's performance, we had one uh particular indicator that was rated at initiate. We had twenty-five that were rated at the level of improve, and We had 25 that were rated at the level of improve and we had five that were rated at the level of impact. So overall, this was a very good report, excellent feedback from Cognia because this indicates that 81% of our indicators were right where we want to be, right there at that average level in the middle, doing what we need to do, making sure that we're moving in the right direction. Five of those areas were at that impact level, which means we have those particular practices that they were looking at are truly embedded, which is that highest level when they're looking at our accreditation. Additionally, Cognia provides a score that's based on surveys. So we had surveys that went out to parents, to students, to community members, to our staff. There was documentation that was collected and submitted from our principals and from our district office staff. And then there were interviews that were conducted and you as board members were interviewed as part of that process, along with the superintendent and myself. There were principals who were interviewed, teachers, parents and students, and even a community focus group was interviewed. And so all of that information was tabulated to give us an overall score. And I will tell you, the average score for district accreditation falls between 260 and 280 points on a 400-point scale. And our last accreditation visit in 2017, Stanley County Schools' score was 260.57. I am very pleased to report that our score for the 2022 cycle was 314.84, which if I did my math correctly is an increase of 54.27. So this is definitely something to celebrate. This is a strong indicator that the programs, the processes, procedures, initiatives that we have established in a post-COVID setting are truly moving our district in the right direction. And I am looking forward to reporting five years from now that our score is even higher than that because we are truly working hard and moving our district forward where we all deserve for our students to be. Some of the recommendations that did come from this visit, we recognize that due to COVID and changes in district leadership, of course, Dr. Dennis joined us in November of 2020, I joined the district in June of 2020, Mr. Dudney joined just before that and Dr. Khan, of course, joined us this school year. So we have seen a lot of change in our district leadership and many of the initiatives are new. And so one of the suggestions that came from the accrediting team was to formalize our data collection process so that we have longitudinal data, meaning that as we continue with these initiatives, they saw the promise in these initiatives, but they would like for us to really focus on how we're collecting the data to evaluate these initiatives. They also suggest that we develop a process for how we review, modify and make improvements to existing programs. And then the final recommendation was that we need to focus on our implementation of the teacher evaluation process with a greater fidelity. We would also like to highlight something with our exceptional children services. I would like to ask Dr. Laura Holland to maybe join us at this time and Dr. Dennis, if you'll go ahead.
So I received correspondence last week for DPI and what is concerning is our indicator 11 and 12, which essentially is our compliance with the 90-day period for when students are referred. And if we fall in that compliance, making sure that we have our students tested and go through the process within the first 90 days. I pulled some longitudinal data and since 2015, we've only hit the mark one time and that mark's 90, anything below 90 correct and they start.
Right. And the expectation is 100%, but at below 90% gets you
It triggers you in non-compliance and corrective action. But I will like to tell you today that I got the both the letters from Sherri Thomas, the Director of Exceptional Children's Division, and Karen Hughes, the Section Chief, that not only we're in compliance on indicator 11, which is K through 12, but also indicator 12, which is pre-K, and we are at 99% for both of those. Want to say something about the Congress?
Oh, I forgot that.
We'll say that at the end. Okay. So one thing I did want to say, yes, sir.
I just have a quick question. I just want to understand this for the record. So what you just said was, is that now we're at 99, which is phenomenal and congratulations to everybody that helped make that possible. I know it wasn't easy, but did you say that the only time we were within compliance was in 2015 where we had over 90%?
No, I think it was between 2015 and now, I think it was 2016, 17 was that one year we were in compliance.
The one year we were in compliance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no problem. And so what I did want to mention too is what Cognia did say, and I think it does mention saying that one thing they were impressed with, and you could probably word it better than I
I'll read it from the report and I apologize for not including it in the PowerPoint, but I would like to read this. "The Board of Education and System Leadership adhere to policies and practices that support system effectiveness and adhere to a code of ethics that allows them to function within their defined roles and responsibilities. Surveys indicate strong support for the Board and their work to improve education."
So we'll be moving forward with the Stanley County Schools' strategic plan. We were going to start it a little earlier this year, but COVID happened and really when you do a strategic plan, you need to have community meetings, face-to-face meetings. I don't think really Zoom suffices for the type of conversations that we'll need to have. So the current plan was authored under the previous administration and of course, it will, at the end of this next academic year, it will expire. Operation Polaris is a plan from our state superintendent and what it tries to do is recover ground lost to COVID and achieve gains for public education in state now and in the future. So under Operation Polaris, you have four key areas. You have literacy, student support services, accountability and testing, and human capital. So our curriculum team attended a work session with NC State Superintendent Catherine Truett for Operation Polaris. The beginning efforts to align our plan with the state initiatives to make sure that we address the following. First is certified and classified advisory council meetings, which we've already, which are in place. Professional learning with school and district leadership directed specifically at data informed decision-making. The implementation of a five-year plan for CNI, enhanced programs for our student services, and of course, putting our students first in everything we do. And the last thing I want to go over is, and that's very preliminary, we'll have a lot more information coming forward as we develop the plan. The last thing, I just got two points for finance. So finances, they're cleaning up and they're concluding a lot of their, we had an audit this past week. You'll get a more formal report probably when Terry, when do you think it'll be ready?
Well, they'll be back in July
Yeah.
To start the final parts of this year's audit. So it'll be, it has to be done by October 34th.
Okay.
Probably in November, December, they'll be
And you'll get the formal report for approval. But I will say this, that he come to my office and had a conversation with me directly, that's the head auditor, the one who will be delivering the report, and he said the preliminary audit reports right now suggest that there are no findings at this time. And he will give me a more extensive report at a later date. And we have submitted our budget request submitted to the county for this next academic year, but it made me feel really good when he come in and was telling me, and of course, I'm not going to get into the details, about the struggles with other districts, especially with all the SRA monies and things like that. And he can say, right now, you look clean unless I find something that I can't see right now with all these dollars you've had to spend with all this other stuff, you've spent it with fidelity, you've spent it for the purposes it should be spent, and I have no findings at this juncture. And that's a testament to Terry and his team. And I think that anyone makes decisions as far as finances with schools. So a lot of good things going on in the district.
And Dr. Dennis, I would also like to say that right before he left, when, as I've spoke to y'all before about how the DPI audits our salary records for our staff, our certified staff and our principals, assistant principals, people want to know what I did to not have any salary exceptions at this point. When we gave him the list of what, where we stood, we only had one and at that one time, it's pretty much in DPI's hands of what we're adding to this record that we need to add to that individual teacher for certification in the career technical education field. But other than that, he wanted to know what I did and I called him, I said, we try to stay as much on top of that as we can on a month-to-month basis. And he asked me, would I mind being a spokesperson for the audit firm? They audit roughly about 60 school systems in the state of North Carolina. And he asked me, would I mind if they gave me, gave my name out to other school systems that had issues with salary exceptions and to maybe communicate with me on what I do on a day-to-day basis and with my payroll staff. So I was really, I felt real comfortable with that and I just want to bring that to y'all's attention.
And I'll say this with the salary exceptions, that he was telling me that there's schools who have pages of the exceptions and the only reason I think we had that exception is because licensure's so far behind and they weren't able, if they would have caught up and it would have matched in, there would have been anything at this point. So that was nothing to do with him, nothing to be cleaned up, it was just DPI's got to catch up with that, so.
That was easy to get up for his own, y'all.
He's not going anywhere. We got him locked in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank both of you and all of you. I think I have one word and that's stellar. I don't, I don't know what else to say besides stellar. Thank you, Dr. Dennis, for your leadership, all of you, all of you. And then I see at the back our other directors and everyone, I cannot even begin to call names and I see principal, you know, we, it's stellar. I don't know what else to say. Thank you. Thank you. Well, Mr. Dudney, can you, can you top, can you top that? I know you are next up.
I do not have anything extra to present tonight, but I do want to let y'all know that, that as Dr. Dennis did say, we did submit our budget for next school year to the Finance Officer of the county. There is one part that I've got to sort of give a little more breakdown on and that's actual the request in the salary portion of that budget. There will be a little more breakdown on that. I've worked on that and I hope to have that to Mr. Henson by the end of tomorrow because they had a May 8 date, so I want them to be able to see that breakdown of what makes up that request of money that we've got. So I do want to let y'all know that.
Thank you. Next up will be superintendent comments, Dr.
I guess it's no secret, it is Teacher Appreciation Week. Of course, we should appreciate our teachers, I think, as well, saying more than just one week in a year. However, this is the formal week. I was able to get out to two schools yesterday when I had some time. I was able to get out to West Stanley Mill and North Stanley High School and they had some really cool stuff planned for their teachers. I was really happy with some of the, what the principals were doing as far as being creative and how they appreciate their teachers. And of course, I will be remiss if I just couldn't say how much I appreciate all of our teachers every day. I love coming into classrooms and seeing the exciting things you're doing. I know the board's been in some classrooms recently and we've just seen a lot of good things and I'll let them talk about that on their own, on their own turn. We have School Lunch Hero Day, May 6th. Make sure that you support our child nutrition workers if you get a chance, all those who can, go and have lunch at school. The School Nurse Day was May 11th and so I would also, our school nurses are finally getting a little bit reprieved from what I know to them has been an extremely hard past couple of years. You know, I've seen them, I just can't even put into words, you know, where I've seen them, how hard they've had to work, you know, the hours they've had to put in, the selfless service they've had. And, you know, I'm glad things have subsided and they've got a little bit more normalcy now. Frank Pulis and the North Stanley High School band, I enjoyed that thoroughly. I have absolutely no musical talent whatsoever. I can hum a little bit, but those, what those kids do, I really, really impressive. And I'm going to let Mr. Sorenson talk a little bit more about this, but I got an exclusive invitation to attend Skills USA with him and we did that last, was it Thursday? Yeah. And I'd never been to a Skills USA contest before, I have to admit, even though at one point my wife was a T teacher. But I was extremely impressed in what I saw and what our kids can do. And I'm not just saying that if you look at the awards that our kids brought home and the competition that they went through, it's extremely impressive. That was one, I had a great time. That was one of the, you know, highlights of my year, I would think, is just going to see what all these kids can do and just seeing how dedicated they are to their craft. And, you know, this, this is, you know, a lot of people, you know, you go to sports championships and a lot of different things. I mean, I think this is just important, just to see how these kids perform and how much work they've put into it. You know, I'll let Mr. Sorenson, he'll be more eloquent and speak more about that. But I just want to thank everyone and want to thank the board for their support and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dennis. So if we can't get a band here next week, are you going to sing?
I'll put on a CD.
Okay. Well, Mr. Sorenson, since you were, said eloquently, eloquently speaking, I'm going to call on you.
We owe Dr. Dennis Hazard duty pay for taking a road trip with David. That's normal. I will talk real quick about teacher appreciation. I haven't the words to say to our teachers all across the county except I love you. You're doing, you're doing the good Lord's work when you, you work with our kids and try to improve their lives and our future, so I love you. But yeah, I'm going to go into a brag mode. I'm usually the grumpy old man that sits up there fussing about stuff, but the Skills USA thing was one of, a couple dozen things that are just, great things are happening in Stanley County schools. We went up there and there were 1,700 high school kids from across the state of North Carolina competing in all kinds of career-oriented competitions. And I think West Stanley, West Stanley kind of swept masonry things. They didn't get all first places, but they took a medal in just about everything they did. There was 30 people, 30 competitors in masonry, building this very complex and difficult brick cinder block with a fancy design thing in the middle. And as we're walking around, we were looking at our kids, you know, they didn't know we were looking at them. I don't see but maybe one that can beat our kid from West and he came in second. So I'm pretty good at calling it. West Stanley scored several up there. I think they scored five or six. North Stanley scored medals up there. South Stanley got a chapter of excellence award. We talk about employability skills and, you know, organizational skills, those are things they got. So I'm going to go down on the list, there's nothing about the Skills USA thing, I could talk about that for all day. Just some things and I'm going to miss some things and there are still things going on. But we had North Stanley High School FFA Regional Champions. FFA is another CTSO that competes. The North Stanley crowd took first place. Okay? That's a huge thing to let y'all know. South Stanley High School, I got to brag on my, my South folks, they had several regional medals and that's with their teacher's been out with an injury for the last couple of months. She's been getting those kids ready to score medals and compete remotely. So that's fantastic. Albemarle High School had competitors at Skills USA and winners. West Stanley had the top, I call it a Top Gun, they pulled in the most medals. Again, West Stanley High School softball Easter tournament win, Albemarle High School YVC track champions, I think that's regular season. North Stanley High School baseball, YVC champs. SSHS softball, YVC champs. SSHS tennis, men's tennis conference champs. Albemarle High School, two conference most valuable players. And there's a ton of scholarships already popping out for our South, I mean, our Stanley County Schools' kids. Great things are happening in Stanley County Schools and I'm going to tell you the truth, I feel sorry for the homeschool crowd and the public school crowd because they're just not getting the same thing. That's all I wanted to say.
Very eloquently done. Ms. Watson.
Well, I would like to thank North Stanley's band. It was wonderful and Mr. Pulis has been here a long time, hasn't he? Yeah. Congratulations, Ms. Poplin. And Jennifer Flo, that was a great presentation. And I'm, I am really proud of the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department doing the summer camps. I think that would be really, really good for some of our students if they could get into that. Mr. Lynn Plummer and Ms. Amy Blake Lewis, thank you for your AIG plan. I think it's going to be a good thing for us. In fact, my granddaughter that's in South Carolina is an AIG. Our district plan and our accreditation, I'm really proud of that. We, I think we've come a long way with what we're doing and teacher appreciation. I do appreciate every teacher that's in our system, our principals, our assistant principals, everybody. Thank you, thank you for all you do for our students. Thank you, thank you for all you do for our students. And especially this Skills USA, they're always, they're doing something every year. Let's see. Any of our, like our nurses, our nutrition, all these people that are, these days are special for you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for everything that you do for our students. I know it's getting close to the end of the year and I hope you enjoy every minute that's Because we are doing great things in Stanley County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Ms. Poplin.
I wanna start out by thanking the North Stanley High School Band and who we finally called Mr. Frank at church for that presentation. That was, that was lovely. Jennifer Flo, thank you very much for your presentation. And I wanna personally thank all of our school safety partners, the EMS, SRO, our Sheriff's Department, City Police, Fire Marshals, and Emergency Management Services. And hopefully I didn't miss anybody in that. But we do really appreciate how you guys work together to keep our students safe and that's a huge thing. As a parent who has students here and as a board member, safety is super important. Ms. Whitley, thank you for your comments. Amy Blake Lewis, Lynn Plummer, Dr. Michael, and anybody else who has helped you guys with the AIG plan, thank you. I know that was a lot of work and a big undertaking, but I have seen some posts from some of our staff who are super excited. They've shared with their students that they're going back to school. And so just see that, 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 that was really endearing, that they are excited to learn and to bring things back to our students. So thank you for that. Dr. Blake Lewis, our accreditation and our score is absolutely wonderful. We are proud of that and we appreciate everyone, staff, students, parents, anybody that took that survey and the preparation for that and that process. Dr. Holland, and your ninety-nine percent rate, that is wonderful to be in that ninety day compliance. And as a parent of a special needs student, I understand how important that is, so thank you for that and your, your team, because I'm sure that involves more than just yourself getting all those, getting all those done and the teachers too. So thank you. And Teacher Appreciation Week, we definitely appreciate all of our teachers and all of our staff. So thank you so very much for what you have been doing for our students and will continue to do for the teachers that are teaching now and teachers who have taught in the past. We appreciate you and we are thankful. School Lunch Hero Day, if you can, go and have lunch with a student or just go and have lunch and tell those ladies, and there's a gentleman at ease and he is hilarious. So if you see him, tell him thank you for your lunch. He makes my day every time I go there. School Nurse Day, we appreciate you. Skills USA, sounds really interesting. I wish I could've gone and saw that. And congratulations to all those students and for that laundry list of sports that Doctors, or Mr. Sorenson read off earlier. Congratulations to all of those schools. I couldn't write as fast as he was reading, so, but I, well, it pretty much heard almost every single high school was represented in that. So congratulations to all those athletes.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Mr. Lisk.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna continue on with the Teacher Appreciation Week. As a husband of an educator, I often miss the days and I think I missed Monday was Principal's Day, maybe. So my wife was a teacher and she is my favorite teacher, although I recognize Gary Moran this morning as my favorite teacher. And my second favorite, everybody's my favorite, is the one sitting beside her, Mrs. Joanne Hesley. Spectacular career. And I believe we have three teachers from the academy, if I'm correct, right here. So it's, it's fitting that that's this week, Teacher Appreciation Week, because we need teachers. We need teachers in every classroom, quality teachers. And I've walked to schools and I've, I've seen some empty classrooms and I've seen long-term substitutes in classrooms and that's not a knock to the substitutes. It's a, I guess, credit to the, to the quality of, of teachers that we do need and instructional personnel. And I think that maybe was backed up by some of the data that you got at the Board Association in showing that in-person learning is, is far superior to, to virtual learning. I'm, I'm gonna end on this and keep it short, but we have an amazing leadership team, starting with our superintendent. I know some of you folks were, were here before, I think, Dr. Dennis arrived, but Mr. Dudney, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, Dr. Khan, Dr. Holland, Lynn Plummer, the entire county office leadership team. I appreciate everything that you do. I think this board should support this county office. We need consistency in Stanley County. We've had a lot of turnover in all of the years. You heard Dr. Blake Lewis refer to that. We don't want to be Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, we want to be Stanley County Schools. And I think having strong leadership will help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lisk. You have to forgive him, Ms. Lisk, if he forgets. Mr. Graves.
Thank you. And I want to thank, start out, and I never say this, but I, I have to say, because so many, there's been so many accolades and I do echo everything that all the other board members have previously said about the amazing job the school system has done and the students, all of the achievements that they've made around Skills USA. And, and thank the students that came out tonight and played for us from North Stanley High School. You know, it's, it's great, we're gonna have to start dedicating more time just for all the thanks, because things are getting better and better within the school system. And I made, just real quick, I made a comment earlier because years ago, everybody acted like the school system was, didn't have any issues, didn't have any challenges. It was exactly the opposite. And I'm excited that I've been able to witness and I know Ms. Gibson has been able to witness as being on the board and Vicky Watson and other members, there has been a transformation over the last six to eight years within the school system. We've, we've been fortunate enough to get some great people in. We've lost some great people and then we've been, we've been able to replace them with great people too. And the progress has continued. So again, I know everybody's worked super hard and the efforts and the progress has been also a continuation of hard work that, that many people put in, you know, before this current team arrived. So we, we wanna recognize the hard work that those folks made as well. I want to thank our speaker. You know, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to, to make excuses here, but the reality is, is that I think I can speak for a lot of the board members, if not all the board members. And when we hear situations, Ms. Whitley, that you brought up, it's very frustrating. We think we're making headway. A lot of stuff happens behind the scenes. Things get reported. The board tries not to make a big public stink about certain things. They try to work behind the scenes. People in the central office, you know, start to do a lot of stuff and then all of a sudden we, we find out that, you know, it, it, it's like, things are not just, they're just not happening across the county like we expect them to. So please, you know, don't interpret frustration as, as dismissing anything that you're bringing to us. It's just we're frustrated that we keep hearing about this and, and, and we clearly are gonna have to do more. And this goes to what Ms. Gibson pointed out. We are the policy committee. The only way we address this, we can't get up here and say that we agree with you. That's not enough. Words are, are meaningless if they're not backed up by action. The policy committee is gonna deal with this. We're going to make it a policy. If we don't make it a policy, there is no accountability. If there's no accountability, the problem's not gonna go away. It might, and I can tell you, this is a priority for the board. And this goes to another issue that was brought up by a board member last month and this was the matter of CRT. And the reality is, is that the board can pass a resolution. I hope that we do pass a resolution, but more important than a resolution is we need to put our beliefs into policy. And that is another area that we are gonna be working aggressively on over the next couple of months, maybe even sooner. And we are going to make sure that we put in policy our expectations around what is and what is not taught in Stanley County schools. And here's why. A lot of people don't understand the issue and there's a lot of confusion. And I'm gonna try and make it real simple for people. If you wanna know why people are so passionate about this, and I have an example I didn't know I was gonna have an hour ago, but I'm glad I have it. And that is CRT is essentially another way to drive a wedge between people. It was Marxism a hundred years ago and that was about class warfare. It was about pitting people, depending upon where you were born, against one another. If you were born to a middle class or a wealthy income, all of a sudden you were marked. You were evil. And people that were poor, they were marked. And that is wrong. And interestingly enough, CRT is doing the exact same thing. The objective is not awareness about, about our history. We have history and we need to improve our, our curriculums around history. But what it is, it's another way, instead of economics, it's about race, to divide people. I know that everyone on this board is adamantly against that. So why is this issue about SEL such a big deal? The issue about SEL is a big deal because it is, and it has been described, as a big umbrella, okay? And interestingly enough, if you go online and you look at the definition of SEL, it says, oh, it was an original concept that was created by Plato in the Republic and it was a way to approach education holistically. The interesting thing is if you go back, there was no social, emotional part of that. It was about physical education and it was about intellectual rigor and intellectual education. And it was about moral responsibility, something that a hundred percent of good people on the planet can agree is a good thing that we want to achieve. But SEL is being used by a vehicle. It's attempted to be used by a vehicle for some people to push an agenda. So if you wanna think of CRT as a poison, which I think it is, and I think any reasonable human being would consider it to be a poison, CRT, think of it as a needle. It's a way to inject the poison into our children. And this is all about accomplishing one thing. It's putting a wedge between parents and their children. It is about making children dependent on the government and not their parents. That is not, I don't think anyone on this board would've disagreed, that we are a hundred percent opposed to that. And I'm telling you right now, we are gonna make sure that we put our beliefs into action. We're gonna get these policies so there can be accountability. Without that, it's all just useless talk, right? And the last thing is this, the last thing is this, and that is reviewing the AIG plan. And this is, this is recommended from the DPI, right, the state. And, and all of a sudden, in here, it talks about making sure that we're meeting certain social, when we're, when we're doing surveys, which is gonna bring me to my last subject for a couple of parents that reached out to me this last week about surveys. But point blank, it says right in here that, let me read this real quick. I have to point it out because people don't understand, you think, oh, well, this talk of SEL, it's baloney. It isn't, it isn't creeping in all over the place. Well, it is, unfortunately. I wish it wasn't. But it goes in here and, and I can't find it right now. But it talks about beyond just the intellectual evaluating whether or not this AIG program is effective, students are gonna be asked and individuals are gonna be surveyed to make sure that it's meeting the intellectual expectations of the program as well as social, emotional. And I'm sorry, that, that is new and AIG is about teaching kids the fundamentals, the basics at a very high and rigorous level. And, 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 and the fact that words like this are creeping in, and it's not from Stanley County, I mean, these people are working hard, they're doing the best they can and they draw from resources, but that's how it gets slipped in and you don't even think about it. So last, I just want to say this and I think it ties everything together. I had a report from some parents that were frustrated because apparently their children had been seeing some surveys that they had not seen and they weren't allowed to opt into. And these were presumably just simple little surveys. But there were some, there was some adult-related matter that I think parents would find objectionable, some parents would find objectionable. And the last part of this is I want us to put into a policy, and this will be brought up in, in Ms. Poplin, who's our vice chair, she heads the policy committee, but I want to make sure that one hundred percent of our surveys, and I know the folks in the central office can't keep track of all this, but we have to put it into a policy so that they do get notified. Anytime a survey for any reason is gonna be given to a child, that their parent sees the survey, that they up, they opt in. And also, but more importantly, and this is a long-term thing, we need to know who generated the survey. It was a, was it an organization? Was it some entity? Where's the information being stored? How long is the information being stored? Who has access to the information? Is the information being sold? If the information is being destroyed, how long is it going to sit somewhere before it's destroyed? And how can we have proof as a school system that that data is being destroyed? Those are the kinds of things I know the school board cares about. I wanted to share with you tonight, Ms. Gibson, thanks for giving me the time.
Well, there wasn't any meaning reason for me to say be brief. I didn't, I didn't think you would be brief, so I just won't go say anything. Thank you, Mr. Graves. Dr. Lefler.
I did not get a advanced English degree in novels. I got a short story degree, so I will not be nearly as long as Mr. Graves. I think he gets paid in technology by the hour. I got paid, I got paid by the job, so. It was great what we had with the North Stanley Band. They did a good job and it was great to recognition with Ms. Poplin. And the cognia that Ms. Amy Blake Lewis is great. Accreditation is a surveyor game where you have these surveyors come in and she knows the game. She had a whole thing of the questions they would ask us. And you would think she was asking the questions because she knew them all. So she's great with that. And what we're gonna do as a system, we've got our plan, which is great, and, and we're gonna make sure it's initiated and that all of our schools do the same thing and we get it. And this week, I've made two visits, one to Millingport School and one to Richfield. And each time I go into the schools, I get a little bit more respect for the teachers because you go into the kindergarten classes and they have their class sizes limited, fourteen to seventeen, I think. You go into the higher grades, fourth and fifth grade, they've got twenty-seven to thirty. And I'm thinking, oh my goodness. They're in there, they've got the children, they've got all the different levels of children. They have to make a lesson plan for all of them. And by the grace of God, they get around to most of them every day and teach each child what they need to have to advance in growing their education. That's a task. I don't know how they do it, but they have the patience and they do a great job doing it. And every time I go in the schools, I'm just impressed about it. And parents need to go in and just see what teachers are doing, not to criticize them, but to actually see what they have to do in their day. It would be informative just to see what teachers have to do. Also, there's been a lot of questions all year about our COVID funds, SRO funds, and it's great to hear that our auditor, with Mr. Dudney, he makes sure every dime, every nickel, every quarter goes to the right place. Because if you don't, the auditor's gonna tell you that it's in the wrong place. So he's, him and his staff have done an excellent job. And then keeping up with all the salaries of our teachers and staff and certified, non-certified, he does an excellent job with that also. And then with keeping up with all the supplements and the bonuses and everybody got, he's done a good job because it all hit at the same time. I mean, the feds and the state all decided they were gonna give this out. He didn't have much time to get it accomplished and he wasn't able to hire any more staff to do it. And he did a- he did an excellent job. Throughout the whole meeting tonight, it seemed like that we've got a lot of positive things going on in our school system, and we're gonna work as a board to make sure that things keep improving and getting better for our students, our teachers, and our staff.
Thank you, Dr. Lefler. I'm gonna finish things up here with echoing everything that all of you have said. Congratulations, Ms. Poplin, for being selected, that's quite an honor. North Stanley High School band was awesome, and I'm looking forward to hearing you sing next month.[1334.91][1334.91](LAUGHTER). The Cognia accreditation, I just don't know what else to say besides that word I used earlier with all of you in here, it's just stellar, everything's stellar, and it makes me very proud. Ms. Whitley, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and I wrote that down, and so I will make sure to, I got it, I got, I got it. Thank you.
There's actually 107, I have a whole list.
Okay, okay. Well, certainly, it might take me a long time to read all that too, but you have my email.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I know that back in the back, I don't know if we have recognized before, we've called almost everybody's name, but Ms. Mitchell, thank you for all you do. Ms. Beverly Pennington, you're back there.[1391.13][1391.13](APPLAUSE). I think Ms. Melissa Smith is back there. Who else am I missing? Ms. Manduka. Rachel's back there, okay. And I love our three teachers right over here too. That's awes, that's awesome. I have something to read. I know, being a teacher, and those of us up here who are in education, Teacher Appreciation Day and Teacher Appreciation Week was always very special. So I just sat at home today, just kind of in a few minutes' time, I was sitting there and just decided to write this. Dear teachers in Stanley County schools, Tuesday, May the 3rd, 2022, has been designated as Teacher Appreciation Day, Appreciation Day across our great nation. From my heart, I want to say thank you for being a teacher. There's not a more noble profession, in my opinion, than that of a teacher. Your love for your students, their families, and community is truly amazing. Your love is more than test scores. Your love of your students is shown every single day as you wipe away the tears from boo-boos, even though you can't even see the boo-boo. Your love is shown when a child gets sick in class and he or she only wants their mama, and you will fill that spot for that child by helping them get to the nurse. You tell that child it's gonna be okay, and they believe you. Your love shines through when a child has lost a dear family member, and we know that many times the family member may be the dog, the cat, the hamster, the goldfish. You empathize with the sadness and broken hearts. Your love shines through when you go home exhausted from the school day, but you still go watch the students playing in his or her, her baseball, softball, basketball, tennis, and soccer games. You go to swim meets and gymnastics on the weekend, even when you wanna spend time with your own family. You go to watch your students perform in community plays and encourage them by saying, break a leg. Your love shines through when you sing happy birthday to your students in class, you give them a pencil or some gift, realizing that for some students, it, it will be the only birthday song they hear and the only gift they receive. Your love shines through when you plan field trips away from school and watch the pure excitement in the eyes of your students when they see animals at the zoo for the first time, or they pick strawberries or pumpkins, they visit our police stations, our public libraries, they visit Pizza Hut where they make their own pizzas. Your love shines through when you involve your students in ways to give back to the communities. Your love shines through when you model how to be a good citizen and the importance of loving everyone, even though they may look or speak differently than they do. I could go on and on and on. Being a teacher is a demanding job in normal times, but teaching through a global pandemic has only proven to me that our teachers do possess superhero powers, even though you do not wear capes. Thank you for never failing to reach and exceed the challenges that you are faced with every single day. Thank you, teachers, for instilling knowledge, loving our most precious treasures, and always supporting our students in all that they do. There is no one more noble than a teacher. You are so loved. Thank you, teachers.[1612.21][1612.21](APPLAUSE). The next date, location for our next board meeting will be Tuesday, Jan, June the 7th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Jean McIntyre Meeting Room. I am going to call us back into closed session at this time for Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A6. Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1. Attorney Client Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3. We are back in closed session, however, if you would like to take just a few minutes break, then that is fine, meet us in the room. Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm gonna call the board back into open session. We'll call Dr. Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to recommend that you approve Section 2A of the Personnel Report as amended and Section 2 as presented.
Okay, I need a motion to approve Section 2A as amended and all of Section 2B.
As presented.
As presented. Do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
I make a motion, we approve.
A motion by Mr. Graves, a second. Second by Ms. Watson.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself from Section 2, Part B, East Alamo Elementary.
Okay. So Ms. Poplin is recusing herself from one part. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, then the Section 2 has been approved as it was presented. I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Graves, a second.
Several.
Second by several, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, the board is adjourned.[1773.63][1773.63](MUSIC)